For taking. The have a full crew so there are no alternates who need to be seated.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we change the itinerary or the agenda. Discussion on the status of the market study and the Hartford draft code to allow these two referrals to be presented first. Occupy their time.
Have a second?
I'll second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll start with the presentation.
Good evening, I'm Gus Kuzminski with Menchon Victor Realty with us tonight. We have Amy DeCatta, she's the president of Menchon Victor Realty, and Rod Janesko, and Chris Nelson from Landworks Development, and Bob Stevens from Stevens Landscape Architect. So, why are we here tonight? Well, we've submitted a, to change the zone on some land on Powder Forest Drive to the new PAD zone. We met informally with this, well, we met with the staff, we did an informal presentation to zoning, and now this is our, you know, our PAD application for our master development plan. The sites that we're going to talk about tonight are, just to orient you, this is Route 10, this is Stratton Brook Road and Powder Forest Drives. The sites are all along Powder Forest Drives in, in green. It's sites three, four, five, and six. Simsbury Inn's right here is a couple office buildings. So, these are the sites we submitted for the PAD. The reason that we submitted to change the zone is technically, right now, we are in I-2 zone. The Powder Forest was established in 1983, and at the time, the, the concept was, build business parks, fill them full of office buildings, and you'll get your ratables. Well, what we've seen over thirty years is, to get off, the office buildings are developing along the transportation corridors, ninety-one, eighty-four, ninety-five, that's where the bigger buildings are. So, we're, we're looking at the PAD zone to give us a little more flexibility in our zoning to do some different things. So, we've submitted a whole package to you, it's a lot of information, I don't know if you've looked at it. We're gonna, in a little going into detail on every little item, we're gonna kind of hit the big pictures, some of the high points on it, and if there's any questions and comments, we'll be happy to jump right into any of the details, but there's a lot of information there to go through. So, to start off, just on the, on the Powder Forest, some of the recent developments that have happened up here with Landworks, you know, there's, the Griss Mill was renovated, and it's now an award-winning restaurant. There's some townhouses being built, and the apartments are just about completed. And down here off of Powder Forest Drive was some condominiums in Carson Way, which were recently, these are age-restricted, and these are not age-restricted, and kind of were working our way out, so we took a look at the available land, and then trying to figure out what we're doing, what we can do to get some developments.
Can you move that foot to the right?
Yep. Okay. So, just to run through, what we have is, the sites here that are darkened, that were, are in part of the PAD application. First, Site Three, it's seventy-five thousand square feet, it's a mix of commercial uses. We're envisioning one-story buildings, could be two-story buildings. The PAD application will allow us some flexibility on uses there that we can't use for the, in the I-2 zone. Potentially, it could be some retail, we're envisioning more that'll be office, maybe some medical office, maybe a restaurant, but it'll give us some flexibility on potentially some retail or whatever. We think that that's a good use, because as you look out across Route 10, you're across from the Mitchell property, and that, if you remember, down in here, that's right on the edge of the Wheaton Center Study, where, you know, that's one of the nodes that the town is trying to beef up and have as a center of town. So, we think having commercial on this across the street from it just kind of reinforces some of the things that are going on across the street and are planned for in the future. On this site right here, it's an assisted living complex. Now, technically, we, this site is not in our PAD application. We have a contract on the site, they're coming in with an assisted living facility. They're choosing, though, to go in under a special exception. We expect them in this summer, so they're technically not part of it. However, all of our technical information, we've included them in it, so you could see the result of, you know, the traffic and the engineering and all those issues with it, but they're technically coming in under a special exception, so they're technically not part of this, although we will be talking about it, because all of our reports include them in. Large building, you know, typically, you've seen assisted living facilities three and four stories tall, they're residence. The architecture is a little more residential, where they have peaked roofs, they're trying to make it look a little more homey. You know, big buildings, not a lot of traffic. That's why, you know, one of the things is having a large building in an industrial park, you're dropping a business park, you're driving by, and you'll see, you know, it mirrors and scales some of the other buildings that are in the area. Over on these two sites over here, it's a mix of residential uses. We're gonna have Ron from Landworks talk a little bit more about it, but there's, there's a mix of townhomes, some apartments, and some workforce housing, but Ron will go into that a little more deeply. In the zoning package, we submitted, we were here, I don't know, a month or two ago, on the subdivision application, where we submitted our master plan, which recalculates all the, as part of the original Powder Forest, we have to provide a minimum twenty percent open space. So, we updated those master plans, and they're part of this, where we are over the twenty percent open space, as part of the whole master plan, there and there. Let's see, when we met informally in front of the zoning commission, they made some comments, I don't know if you were given the minutes to that, but basically, when we met with them, they asked us to do a couple different things to reduce the density a little bit, which we did. They were looking for maybe some more workforce housing, which we added some buildings which have workforce housing. They were looking to change the entrance to some of the parcels, which we lined them up a little better. And, you know, this is, originally, it was a kind of a more of a master plan, and now, we're, as we're working through the details, we're seeing some better design coming through on these. And they were also looking to add some multi-use paths to some of the neighbors, which we're, we're looking at now. You know, specifically, these two office buildings have connections to the hotel. We're probably gonna make some connections to the office buildings, to the hotel, and, you know, one of the big things with having residential on this site, some of the planning issues we looked at is, you know, one, one of the big themes that you've seen recently in planning is, you see Boston and New York, all the big developments, they're centered on transportation hubs, near the railways and the subways, where typically, nobody wanted to live near them. Well, now, they figured out it's very convenient to have near a rail station or subway apartments and things, so people can walk out and get quickly to the transportation hubs. Well, if you really look at this, is the commuter lot for the bus station is basically across the street, and with some trails through there, you can actually, instead of driving your car into the center of town, taking the bus in Hartford, you could probably, with these apartments, walk on down to the commuter lot, jump on the bus, and travel into Hartford. So, we thought, planning-wise, that's, that's a pretty terrific thing, with a little more, some trails and a little more dispersal, that you can, you know, it's a great spot to have residential right there. The other thing is, you know, planning-wise, we looked at this and said, geez, this, this makes a great kind of bookend to the Wheaton Center Study, where you're, you know, we're adding more commercial. Right now, it's a little disjointed, you got Mitchell's, you got the Simsbury Inn, you got a medical building. Kind of, Abigail's is a little further out there, but, you know, this kind of will finalize the end of it, and allow a little more presence to, for the Wheaton Center. So, over time, we think that, planning-wise, it's, it's a good use for that. Just some other things, planning-wise, you know, when you take apartment buildings, you know, big, tall, two- and three-story buildings, if you put them right up against the road and right next to residential spaces, you know, some of the neighbors may object. Well, in an office park, you know, you drive by, in an office park, you see big buildings, and you're not sure really what's in them, they can be offices, they can be apartments. You know, down here, it's residential, but there's a hundred fifty-foot buffer, so you're screened from a lot of what's going on there, so the bigger buildings, scale-wise, they fit right into the business park. Same thing with the senior living, you know, large building, set back from the street, there's trees along the street, but, you know, you're driving through a business park, so there's no single-family homes right across the street that, you know, that it really wouldn't work with. So, we think, scale-wise, having bigger buildings, it all, it all kind of works, planning-wise. You know, the, the other thing that the Powder Forest has done is, five or six years ago, we added, we paved a sidewalk from Route 10 all the way up to Powder Forest Homes. And I can tell you, because our, our office is right in here, and over the last five years, not during the winter, but for the rest of the season, there's a lot of people walking up and down there, and they're making connections to, to other parts of some of the adjacent communities when you, you know, the road ends here, and then Powder Forest Homes and Carson Way continues, but all of a sudden, you have access to other, other parcels. And what we've seen is, actually, it was just on the board of Powder Forest Homes, they used to have a series of people who would drive into, into here, park, and walk along all these trails. At some point, it'd be a little, it'd be nicer to get a little better connection to Rails to Trails, because, you know, it kind of ends here at Route 10, and with a little more sidewalks in the area, you could have direct access to Rails to Trails. Also with this, you know, we can dump you off here, and we talked to Rich Zowicki about getting some sidewalks on Stratton Brook Road, but that makes a nice transition to Rails to Trails, which kind of gets the trail system farther out to more of the neighborhoods. We've also submitted an engineering report, which we're not going to go through in detail, but, you know, some of the highlights, you know, it's, it's in a business park, so we have all the utilities that are there, but typically, when you look at, you know, what are the two big critical areas? One of them is drainage, because with the low-impact drainage techniques, you need really good soils to dissipate the water. And on all our sites, we have great sand, it's a little gravel, but it's mostly sand. The water table's at least eight feet down, so on most of these sites, they're perfect sites for LID techniques. We should be able to dissipate most of the water right on-site, dump it right back into the ground. The Powder Forest was designed back in the early eighties, where the concept was, have big pipes, get the water out to Farmington River, out to the Connecticut River before, and get the water down before all the water from north, you know, Mass, New Hampshire, and Vermont comes down, so we can flush it out quickly. So, the drainage in there is tremendously oversized, and once you put in LID techniques, most of the water will be dumping right back on the site, so it'll help recharge the groundwater. So, drainage really isn't an issue. The other issue that we took a look at is sewage capacity. And, because one of the things you get concerned with a little bit is, when you add a lot of housing, how's your, you know, what was the capacity that we had originally there as an industrial park versus what we're using? Because once you introduce housing, it generally uses a little more water. Well, we took a look at it, and we're using about forty percent, forty-six percent of the capacity of the sewer that was available on the site, so sewer capacity's not really an issue. The other issue, we, we have a traffic report in there, it's eighty-something pages, if you want to go through in detail, but that was one of the concerns of the zoning commission, because if you've been on Route 10 in the morning, it's, it's, it's an issue. Well, originally, on these sites right here, it was, we had the capacity to add about four-hundred-and-sixty thousand square feet of office. So, yeah, four-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, so if you divide that by a thousand, multiply it by five, you're over two-thousand cars. Adding these type of uses, we're, on traffic-wise, we're less than half of what we would've had if we had developed it as office. And part of that is, commercial, this traffic is probably very similar, depending on the mix of uses we get. If you get a restaurant, you know, generally speaking, their, their traffic is later at night, so you might, we're assuming that it's at peak time, but if you get a better mix of uses, traffic dissipates. If you get like a restaurant, if you get some retail in there, that generally starts at nine or ten in the morning versus eight o'clock, so your peaks are less. On the assisted living facility, that's a great use for, for traffic, because some of the residents will have cars, generally, that are driving every day. Generally speaking, they're never out at peak periods, you know, they'll go out at ten or eleven in the morning and run to the store, but very little traffic, and there are some employees there, but it's nowhere near what an office building would be. So, that really helps us on the traffic there. On the residential, typically on the residential, it's kind of, it's, it's going against the flow of traffic, because now, all of a sudden, it's going out versus coming in. And typically, on residential, when you look on commercial, you know, on office buildings, you have a peak in the morning and the afternoon, where everybody's got to be to work at eight, eight-thirty, something like that, and everybody leaves at four-thirty or five o'clock. With residential, typically, people are leaving it, because they gotta travel wherever they're going, and, you know, so it's, it's dissipated over several hours. So, the traffic is, it's a little more even over several hours versus everybody's got to come in and be to work at eight o'clock. So, traffic-wise, we're in significantly better shape for what we're doing on the Powder Forest. What happens on Route 10, we addressed a little bit, is, you know, realistically, it's a regional problem. The, you know, what are the two big problems on Route 10? Well, the bridge over one-eighty-five, it's, you know, one direct, one lane each direction. The state tried to widen the bridge and double the capacity five or ten years ago. The state said, no, we like our steel bridge, you know, it's a big traffic problem, because it backs up all morning. The state tried to widen Powder Forest Drive, excuse me, widen Route 10 from one-eighty-five up to Powder Forest Drive. They probably would've lost a couple sycamores, so the town said, no, we don't want to do that right now. So, you know, if you, if you look at, the towns made some decisions that, you know, aesthetics are maybe a little more important than traffic, and if you drive through there in the morning, it's a problem. CROG hired FUS two years ago when they did a study. They came up with a bunch of recommendations on how they can alleviate the problems going forward. There's a plan in place, and the state, over time, is going to make improvements to correct what's happening on Route 10. It's not a quick thing, it's gonna take time, but, you know, we look at our piece and go, geez, this, this plan that we have today is better for the traffic going forward than it would be having all offices there. Now, I'm gonna turn it over to Ron, who's gonna talk a little, specifically, a little more about some of the retail pieces, excuse me, residential piece of this.
Good evening. Rod Janesko, Landworks Development, this is Chris Nelson, also Landworks Development. I have sets of variety of things, if anyone would like a set, plant sets, reports, anything like that. I know you've got a packet, and you've probably got it electronically, but we do have them here if you, if you'd like them. So, just, do you have the zoning minutes stacked there?
Yep.
That's mostly about us. Chris, could you hand those out first? Just for, for some of the new members, I see a few new faces. Chris and I, our history in town goes back probably fifteen years. We took over the Bretton Wood project, we bought it from the FDIC, and we revised the plans, and turned it into Summerfield, that's on the north side of town, behind Bowling Alley. And Chris and I, we've just had our, bought our twentieth anniversary of working together, and we've done, I don't know, I'm gonna say, a dozen projects, building seven-hundred plus or minus housing units, commercial, retail, restaurant. Most recently in town, we renovated the old mill, as Gus mentioned, into Millwright's Restaurant, which we're proud to say is, keeps garnering awards. They were just named finalists in the James Beard Association in New York City. So, we, we did the mill building, that's where our offices are. We also did the Mill Commons Apartments, which are on Griss, Griss Mill Road. And we just basically completed the construction, we're leasing them up. And as we leased them up, we, you know, for every one that we leased up, we had two, two prospects that would've liked something a little smaller, a little less expensive, let's say. If you recall, during the planning and the zoning process, when we were coming through with that project, we kind of pushed it up higher and higher, and we created an elevator product that's a luxury product, one garage per unit. So, we're at the peak of the, of the market for the entire region. The only thing that might be a little more expensive would be Blueback Square, the rental units there. But, so we're really at the, at the top of the market here. And ever since, you know, we've had discussions with Hiram and with other commissions about, you know, gee, we could really use some lower-priced rental housing for town employees, police, fire, employees of the businesses that are in town. And so, we, we kind of tucked that in the back of our minds as, as we started discussions with EV Realty on a possible future project. So, the other thing that we're, we're just starting up here, we just released to the market, the townhomes overlooking the mill pond and the waterfall. Those, again, because it's kind of an urban-type setting, and it's a little, you know, picturesque and everything, and we wanted to go a little higher, and a little more luxurious there, so the townhomes are in the eighteen-fifty to twenty-two-hundred square foot range, plus lower-level option. All have two-car garages, so again, top, top of the market for the area. Again, tucked that in the back of our minds, that if we were to come in in the future, we'd like to come in, slot in underneath that, and appeal to a broader, a broader market demand. So, in the packet, one of the early things in, in our packet is the, a little market letter regarding townhomes, talking about smaller, a little more diverse in size, one-car garage options. So, that's kind of in the mix. And then, on the apartment side, there's a very extensive study in there about demand, and the type of product, and the sizes of the products. I think that report is, you know, forty pages, so the first five pages is kind of the executive summary, it really hits the high points, and then the rest of it is demographic profile information, which all went into kind of our thinking on, on what to do, as our part of this, this latest development. Carson Way is seventy-four homes that we're building right now. The model home is, is here, and we're about to start siding it, I think, but it's, it's looking great, and there's a lot of interest in it. And as, as Gus was discussing, as you kind of come around the bend here, we've got single-family, active adult, got single-family, not age-restricted, but by design, it's, it's more of a lifestyle, housing type. The lawn is maintained, the driveway and sidewalk is maintained for you, so it's kind of a condominium lifestyle, but with your own detached home. And so, what would be kind of the next transition? Well, we didn't think, you know, really large-scale office or, or anything like that made sense, because of our neighbors right across the street, and we're one of the neighbors at this point. So, we figured townhomes might be a nice transition to address a, a market need that we can't fill over here. And that would be more in scale with these properties right here. So, townhomes. Then the last section was kind of the apartment product, that, again, we're not serving here. And, and then, when we were here for, when we were before zoning on the informal, again, with Hiram's recommendation, look at workforce housing. And so, what we did is, we took half of the site and said, let's dedicate that to workforce housing, which would be, again, a much lower price point, a little simpler, nice design, though, new, energy-efficient. We do Energy Star three-point-O on everything, we've been recognized for that. And so, this would all be new, energy-efficient, townhomes, upscale, and then workforce housing. So, it's kind of a broad, kind of a broad picture of it. I'm gonna kind of go through these plans relatively quickly, and I'd be happy to come back to them if you'd like to talk a little more about them, but as, as Gus mentioned, there's just so much information to go through, that it's kind of difficult. This was the plan that, that we brought in initially with our informal. And it, it showed one type of product for apartment units. This was all of, it slots in just below Mill Commons, but a little above Dorset Crossing. So, what we tried to do is complement the marketplace, even taking into account projects that aren't built yet, but are anticipated. So, this is what we had started with, and through the recommendations that we picked up from zoning, and working with staff and, I mean, Realty, we evolved the plan a little bit, and we created larger buffers between products. This product is that same garage, upscale, but below Mill Commons. We moved the clubhouse to up here, so as you enter, you kind of go up the hill to the upper tier, and you've got this nice clubhouse between the two products. So, if you live in the workforce housing, you simply take a left, and this is all the workforce housing down here. If you take a right at the entrance, or right at the top of the hill, you've got the garage product. Gus mentioned all the interconnections, so we connect to the sidewalk system at, at these two points. We interconnect between product sites. So, what's workforce housing, is that for the firemen and the police? It's a, it's a much simpler, there's no garages here, so these units are smaller. We have studios of like six-hundred and thirty-eight. That's, that's, you know, that's kind of the late, you know, try Google, you know, workforce housing, and you're gonna see all this kind of, you know, appealing more to the, let's say, the Gen X, Gen Y, millennials, smaller units, but, you know, nice volume space, energy-efficient, lots of glass for natural lighting, modern appliances, good, efficient layouts. So, we have, you know, here, the, the primary range is maybe six, thirty square feet is the studio, then it goes to the sevens, eights, nine-hundred square feet. So, everything's a little smaller, a little more compact, you know, instead of a great big walk-in closet, you might have a normal, normal closet. But it just, it, it brings the size down, which allows us to bring the price down. So, we might be, you know, at twelve-hundred dollars rent here, where at Mill Commons, that same type of unit might be sixteen, seventeen, eighteen hundred dollars. A little less on the amenities, you don't have a garage, but that's the whole idea of creating a diversity of, of housing. So, yes, that's to appeal to people that are making a little less money than can afford, you know, to spend two-thousand, twenty-five-hundred dollars at Mill Commons. So, as Gus was mentioning, we have all these interconnections between products to the sidewalk system, down to Stratton Brook Road, this is kind of a multipurpose path. This side of Stratton Brook has the bicycle symbols painted on it, so I, I don't want to call it a sidewalk, but at least we try to connect down there, and if we can work with the town to try to do something a little better in the future, then we're, we're all, we're all for that. I mean, we had a good meeting with Rich and Howard and Hiram, talking about some ways to, to connect to the bus stop and the Rails to Trails.
So, there are no driveways or roadways being cut onto Stratton Brook?
Absolutely not, right.
There's one, isn't there, the one that's there now, or is that further up?
It's already there.
Yeah, up on Carson Way, that's a good point, at Carson Way, we made a request to come through the buffer with a roadway. The folks at Powder Forest Homes liked that idea, it's almost like a release valve to allow us at Carson Way to have our own entrance point. But here, on this piece, no, we're not proposing any, any breakthroughs other than the idea of this transversing the slope, meandering around trees to bring pedestrians only down to the, the lower level.
So, to the, to the, what's that, the west?
To the west, this Carson Way.
Yeah, okay, and what's that road that's there in Alton, it's already there?
This, yeah, this is Powder Forest Lane.
That's Powder Forest Lane?
Yes, and this is here, and it's been here since eighty-three, nice stone walls, and, you know, Nice stone walls, and, you know, both of the entrance points on Route 10 and over here are just, they're meant for huge capacities. I mean, the roads, if you know them, they're like thirty-two feet wide paved in here. The exits are two-lane, exits a right arrow and a left arrow, and you could stack multiple vehicles there. So, if you look at the traffic report, you're gonna see that there's no issue at all with respect to handling the volume of trips here.
How many floors will the workforce housing be in, and the other product?
I'm gonna start you over here at Carson Way's two stories, plus walkout in some of the areas, so you'll have like a three-story elevation, like our model is.
Free standing homes, Carson Way's free standing homes.
Correct, right. So, I'm bringing you through the transition. Then, the townhomes here are two stories only. But again, because some are on a slope, you'll have a third-story walkout.
The slope's going to the north, or at the...
Yeah, it's...
Starts at Stratton Brook and goes...
No, Stratton Brook is down lower. So, this is above Stratton Brook, and then way above Stratton Brook. I mean, by the time you get down here, it's like twenty-five feet elevation change.
Right, there's a pretty steep hill right off of Stratton Brook.
Correct.
The peak's right there.
Yep.
It's where the deers come down all the time.
And you say there's a hundred and fifty feet between there and there?
Hundred and fifty foot, and that was on the master plan, as long as there has been a master plan. And so, we obviously respect the hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer. And in fact, everything we're showing is set twenty-five feet back from there. So, we're at a hundred and seventy-five feet to allow twenty-five feet workspace, little grading room. But nothing along this is gonna be walkout. This is two stories here, this is two stories. But again, as I'm saying, some places internally, like here, where we have a slope, we'll do the walkout.
So, if I'm driving down Stratton Brook, and if I look to the north, what am I gonna see?
Hundred and fifty feet of beautiful dense vegetation.
So, we're not gonna be sightlines to the apartments? No sightlines to the apartments?
We're not touching this at all. I mean, it's really beautifully dense right now, so...
If the trees were not there, would you be able to see the apartments because of the slope?
Well, again, it depends on, if you're standing on the other, on the...
I'm just talking about driving down the...
Yep, right. And that's what I'm trying to say, is that if you're standing perpendicular, looking at it, and all the trees were cut down for some reason, and you looked up twenty-five, thirty feet, that's where you're gonna see the start of something. But driving down here, I mean, your sight distance, you know, your peripheral vision is like this. So, I can't envision how anybody driving down Stratton Brook would even know there's anything going on up here. So, of course, just like we've done in the past, everything will be flagged out and fielded by the surveyors, so that hundred-and-fifty feet is, you know, preserved. And as Gus mentioned earlier, you know, this was all anticipated to be office, you know, large-scale offices. But what we tried to do is break it up into smaller pieces, move them around a little bit. There's some elevation roll, so we're working with the grades instead of fighting the grades. And then, these buildings down here, I'm gonna call them kind of two-to-three story. And you'll see the elevations where, on the, we have got two full stories, and then at the third level in the center, we use the center core, but then we drop the sides to tuck the studios into kind of the roof lines, where we have dormers in the roof and things like that. Because by the time we get here, we've got large-scale, tall, office buildings. So, this seemed like a closer relationship, whereas this to this and this to this, it all kind of makes sense. So, we're stepping up as we go towards Route 10.
How many total units were you talking about?
It's two-hundred-and-fifty-two overall. It's forty-eight townhomes, two-hundred-and-eight of this garage product. One-hundred-and-eight of the garage product, and then ninety-six of the workforce product.
How many cars a day, all that stuff? How many cars a day would end up on Route 10?
Do you have the traffic report?
Not a peak hour, cars a day?
A peak hour?
Total per day.
Okay, eighty-five pages of traffic report.
It's probably similar. Gus will look that up. The, in your packet, you're gonna also see kind of a match line of the master plan, where you can see kind of the tree-massing and the street-tree concept of creating kind of a village greens, that all these townhomes are arranged around a green system. Similarly, these apartments are, the front entrance is really very nice. Jack Hemper is working with us again. And I kind of painted a picture for Jack, and I said, you know, imagine that this is an old Ensign Bickford Estate out in the woods, because the woods are just beautiful there. And, you know, there's so many iconic metal-roof brownstone buildings around town. And so, Jack designed for us, this is the mail center. If you've been over to Mill Commons, we have a mail center. They're made out of brownstone, which we mined right out of the ground in front of the restaurant. So, when we built that parking lot, first scoop was dirt, second scoop was scratching ledge. So, we hammered that out, and we sent it to a company that slices it, almost like a deli slicer. And so, you've got a nice, you know, rough edge. They slice a piece off, they slice, they slice, and they palletize these boulders, and then they crack them in half, and they keep slicing until they get to nothing. So, all that brownstone that you see out at the mill, the townhomes, the apartments, the mail center, is all right out of the ground in front of the restaurant at West Street. And so, we've been saving up our boulders, and we still have plenty of pallets. So, we'll be using a lot of that in this development as well. And so, this, you know, iconic Simsbury, Ensign Bickford, brownstone mail center will be where all of the mail for the apartments will go to. So, the idea is you come in the main entrance, you've got this nice entry sequence, a gatehouse kind of approach, like it was the old gatehouse to an estate, and then up the hill to where the clubhouse is. Also, this kind of shows you, this section, it's in your plant set, but it shows you kind of the relationships in the townhome area. This is around one of the greens, where you have the sides of two buildings and the front elevation of another, with the treeed green in the center. So, we created these kind of courtyards. And then, this diagram shows the relationship, and this is to scale. This would be a building along the hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer side, the roadway network sidewalks on both sides. And then, this is one of the units that's the walkout. So, you can see how it steps down, and we add stone down here to kind of soften the height of it. But, you know, the proportions are all very nice, and it creates a nice streetscape. And it's gonna be heavily landscaped, just as we did over at Mill Commons. Architecture for the townhomes is in there. It's very similar to what we did at Mill Pond Crossing, which we're being built right now. Brownstone features, you know, colonial. This shows you the clubhouse. Again, we used some of our brownstone. All the features that we'll need, not only for the lease-up, but also... Also for folks, these are the ones that are...
All right, Hiram, in the budget next year, we'll ask for a higher-capacity unit.
Yeah.
If we have more, we just, we get a higher capacity.
Again, I don't know how much detail to go into, but I just want to show the elevation of the workforce, because that was asked about. And you can, again, see how we've stepped things down, tucked the studios into the roof system, and, you know, added the brownstone features. Yeah.
You want me to show it? How many units would be in that?
Those are twenty-four units in each building. So, four units, that's the ninety-six. Parking, there's plenty of room for parking. I mean, we didn't get close to pushing the envelope in any way, shape, or form with respect to density. So, there's a lot of room between the buildings, you know, won't feel jammed in there. The hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer is wonderful as the back, you know. So, you're in one of these units, and you've got this beautiful, you're above Stratton Brook and a hundred-and-fifty feet of wood between you and the canopy of that roadway. Let's see. I did want to hand out, these are the minutes from our informal zoning. And I think the reason I get the most amount of time on our team is because most of the questions related to the apartments and the townhomes. And so, this gives you an idea of what was discussed during informal. And at the very bottom, you'll see, we put some bullet points of some of the things that we did to address those questions. And Gus reviewed those earlier. And on the back of this, you're gonna find, this is something that was in our planning and our zoning packets back for Mill Cross, Mill Commons, the apartments off Grist Mill Road. Because the charrette, which was a very extensive study, talked a lot about the need for more rental and multifamily housing in town. That, over the last decades, if not almost generations, there hasn't been much multifamily built in town, while single-family has been built up quite a bit. The ratio here in town is, I, it might approach ninety percent or eight, high eighties percent of single-family to multifamily, where other valley towns, you know, Avon has probably got ten percent higher, Farmington ten percent beyond that as well. So, more of a balance of price points and options for people to rent. So, the charrette kind of discussed all of this. And we were talking about it earlier, and some number was floated out there during the charrettes, about, you know, seven, eight, nine hundred units would not be inappropriate. And I believe that that may be why the PAD zone was kind of created, to allow applications like this to come forward. So, we're, you know, from our opinion and in our market study, you know, we're kind of just scratching the surface, and we're almost surgically inserting two distinctly different types of rental housing that already exist in town or are proposed. Let's see. One of the new exhibits we have, zoning commission asked us about potential impact on the school system. And so, we have a handout. What we did is, you know, we started studying this subject of school enrollment figures, capacity of the school system. And we thought, instead of trying to create our own study, we thought we would use Board of Education information and kind of bring that to you, because this is public information. So, in this packet, you'll find Table Five, which is from the Board of Education. And that shows what the enrollment is over the last five years. And that shows a decline of ten and a half percent, over five hundred student decline in just the last five years. We dug a little deeper, and we found a 2011 report that was done for the Board of Ed by Dr. Peter Prouder of Simsbury. And what he looked at for the district was looking back a lot further and looking forward a lot further than a five-year slice. So, that looked at two thousand, went way back. You know, 2005 was the peak enrollment. We had five thousand fifty-seven students in 2005. And the graphs in his report kind of show what we all, I think, could understand, where the baby boom came, and everyone had kids, and then it tapered off. But then, the boomlets had kids, and we had a second peak, and that happened in 2005, and now it's declining. And the studies are really interesting in that it shows, I'm gonna say, a precipitous drop in enrollment. And the decline is not only declining, but it's accelerating down. And so, if you look at these charts and you look at the numbers, you're gonna see a drop of over fifteen hundred students from the peak in 2005 to 2021. There's no telling if that's gonna be exactly what happens, but if you look at from 2011 to today, the numbers have jived pretty closely. I mean, within a few, you know, few students. So, we also attached kind of the benchmark study. It's done by Rutgers, and it's used nationally. And they look at school enrollment and public school enrollment for housing product types. So, if you're building a four-bedroom, single-family homes, what's the typical impact of that? Obviously, in this case, we're looking at, you know, townhomes, two- and three-bedroom, or apartments that are one- and two-bedroom. So, the ratios are, you know, all detailed in here. And they come out to suggest about point-one-two students per housing unit of our two-hundred-and-fifty-two. So, that equates to thirty students. And so, I said, "You know what? Let's check what we have over at Mill Commons." Same basic product, we have one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms over there. And what's our experience? Well, of the sixty-eight units that are occupied currently, there are eight children of the school age. I can't confirm that they're all enrolled. It's kind of privacy information that I don't have access to. But the standard is typically around ninety-five percent are public school versus about five percent private school. So, that works out to about seven-point-six theoretical, you know, could be attributed to sixty-eight housing units of this type. The ratio is point-one-one. So, our actual ratio at Mill Commons is almost right on the money, the one-point-one-two that the Rutgers study found. So, thirty students is what we're projecting, may reside within the community, compared with a drop of over eighty students a year that the town is experiencing right now. So, we're down seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven students from the 2005 level right now, and dropping. So, I know zoning was concerned, because years ago, you know, if this was 2004, it might be a very different conversation. We're, you know, we're rising, and we're full at the schools. We don't want to look at additions or anything like this. Well, right now, we're down seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven from 2005. So, the idea of being that something with about thirty students could easily be absorbed into the spectrum between elementary, middle, and high school.
I just want to be clear, it's thirty students for everything you've shown?
Correct.
For all that total?
Which, again, makes sense. Over at Mill Commons, there's eight children, of which we don't want to assume a hundred percent are in the public schools, because sometimes there are private school students. But it's that, that's the ratio.
The figure might be misleading, just because, as you pointed out, it is at the top end of the market, right? You're pushing at the top end. So, as you bring it down, you're probably gonna bring in more?
Well, the study that I gave you, or, well, it's in the... In the study, you're gonna see, the ratios all go based on price point. So, the lower the price point, the higher the ratio. And that's been calculated again. So, you'll see there are, there's like an eight-fifty to thirteen-hundred dollars a month for a rental. Then there's over thirteen-hundred, but under eighteen-hundred, and then... So, you're correct, I mean, the ratio is point-one-one. It could be a little lower if it was all high-rent. But it's all been accounted for in there.
Right, so, to the point, though, this development would most likely bring in more than point-one, or you're saying it would bring in more?
No, 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 I'm saying that is the figure calculated based on the exact product here. And in the charts, you're gonna see our square footage, our price points, and the number of students anticipated. If this was all like Mill Commons, instead of thirty, it might be twenty-four, or something like that. If it was all workforce housing, it might be thirty-five or forty students. But we've tried to blend it, you know, so that, again, we don't go too high on the impacts or too low either.
Did you give the Rutgers one as well?
Yes, the Rutgers.
The same one from Cross, I think.
Yeah, the Rutgers, the Rutgers stuff really is, shows that it's basically bedrooms, that's where that comes from. And so, that's more determinative than even the... And so, that's more determinative than even the, the prices.
One other, let's see, the Rutgers, I've got a chart, I think that's it on the, on the school side of this. So, we were asked to look into the schools, and, and so that's kind of as comprehensive as I can get. There's, there's even a PowerPoint from November for the, the budget, kind of for the Board of Ed for this year. And it's, I, I included the enrollment section of the presentation, talking again about the drop and the adjustment, like, you know, PTE, for the, you know, teacher ratio to students and, and the numbers, teachers in the district keeps dropping to adjust for the, the decrease in, in the enrollment. So, it's, it's all in there.
Does this mean the Board of Ed's gonna ask for less money this year?
Well, you know, it's interesting, because when I read the, the budget information itself...
That was a joke.
Well, costs on some things are going up, but enrollment is dropping, so it's kind of, that's why we're only at a one percent, or, or something like that.
That's why this is so complicated. Upstairs, they're figuring ways to save money because of dropping enrollment, and downstairs, we're popping it right back up again.
Well, you know what, and...
But, you're gonna pay more taxes.
Exactly. And that's, that's my next item on the agenda, is to talk about economics, because that's absolutely correct. I mean, we're always trying to find that right balance, you know? And so, if it was all office, it'd be a traffic nightmare, it couldn't be absorbed. They've been trying for thirty years to absorb this land for office. It's not happening. It's not going to happen. There are five, there are six buildings at the frontage, is a nice place where if someone does want their own little office, they could build one for them. But the big, the big office building up in Powder Forest, it never happened, thirty years they've been trying.
Did you give a number?
Yeah. On, okay, at Powder Forest Drive, at the morning peak, there is a hundred and twenty cars going out, sixty-five turning south and, excuse me, sixty-five turning north, fifty-five turning south. And at night is the big peak, which is, it's basically about three hundred cars leaving the site.
You're talking about peak hours?
Peak, peak hours.
Route ten there carries about twenty-two thousand a day?
Twenty-two thousand. And they said at, at peak hour...
So, I guess my question is, is twenty-two thousand a day now?
Yep.
What would it be?
Well, you're adding at peak hours, you're adding a hundred and fifty cars.
Do we have to take a left, go, go the other way, rather than go on?
Most of the time it's from the north.
Nellwood's head up to Avon or, or Bushy Hill?
Yeah, yeah, there's actually, they only have, like, thirty-four and three cars in the morning, and a hundred and thirty-six and six, that's on Powder Forest Lane heading out. The diagrams are all in there, it's interesting to see the split, who goes left versus right. They show every intersection, you know, AM, PM, and if they're turning left or right, then...
Gus, can you, one of the pages, they have that.
It's one of the tables. Yeah, it's actually, almost the first page. They have traffic volume figures, it's the first one, kind of a recap, and then they go through.
I remember that state to finish their traffic study on Route Ten.
Yes, we, we did a Route Ten quarter study.
About a year ago?
Yes, I know, we've been waiting for it forever, as far as, you know, having them finishing. Are there any, what, what is their conclusion as far as expansion in that area?
The only thing that the townspeople want was the turning lanes provided where it's necessary for safety purposes, but there's never been any outcry to increase the number of lanes from two to four, better said.
The opposite.
Yeah, it's the opposite.
It's the opposite. To your point about, I, I understand that two-lane, routine town is inconvenient for some people, you guys...
Certain parts of the day.
And certain other people during the day, but the community does not want it for them.
Right.
And the reason they don't is that they see other communities with four-lane roads down the middle to their community, and it becomes a very different place, and it makes your buildings less marketable. There's a reason.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
I appreciate the inconvenience.
Before you get into the economic discussion, do you, do you have a plan to phase this Certain buildings at one point, and certain ones later on?
The, again, I'm trying to envision the future and what it might, might bring. Yeah, just polish up your pitch of the ball. Right, so, for our part of it, obviously, the, the entry road, the amenity package would all come first. And I would see building, say, this building and these two buildings. That would give about the same number of units of both product types. And then the next two, and the next one, and the next two, and the next one. So that both products are being absorbed at the same time, because they're both at totally different price points, amenity points. So, I could see this being absorbed in, I'm gonna say, a two-year window from when we first have the first building done, and can, and actually put people in there, till when the last one is done. Mil Commons, eighty-eight units, we just got our CO on the last building, we're at about eighty-two percent right now. So we're, we're doing very well, and that's been almost a two-year process. So with this, again, it being two different products, if we absorb, you know, eighty-eight and eighty-eight a year, or, or in over an eighteen to twenty-four month period, that, that might be appropriate. So this is gonna kind of filter into the system, not all at once, it's gonna come over time. And because Chris and I are building this for ourselves, we can take a little more time, work to the market, we don't wanna build buildings that aren't gonna be occupied for a long time, so we'll just kind of take it as the market wants it to be, to be absorbed.
So the plan is for landlords to buy this property from EB Realty?
Correct.
So you become the landlord?
Again, yes, just like Mil Commons.
So, fifteen years from now, twenty years from now, the world's very different than we imagined, and it's not worth your while to rent? You'd rather sell these, are they convertible?
You know, not, not really. I mean, we're not setting it up that way. This product doesn't take well, I don't think, to that. Mil Commons is more likely, because each unit has a garage, elevator, it's got a high amenity package, so in theory, if, if the market shifted that much, it's possible. So renters might become owners. But in these two products, we, we haven't even thought that, that far in the future. I mean, we've been working for twenty years to, to, to build and, and own product like this, and, so it's just, it's part of our portfolio, planned for ourselves. This isn't to, to, to build, occupy, and, and flip, or anything like that, this is for our own account. The townhomes, I'm a little less certain, because a lot of it depends on the other for-sale product that we have going on right now. We don't wanna take on too much, so it could be that we focus on the apartment product, which is where the greater need is, I think, in the community. And then, we might, after we finish this in two years, then switch over to here, because at that point, Mil Commons would be completed, even though they're complementary, there's just so much capacity we have to, to juggle all these things. So, we'll take our time.
We see proposals from several developers, many of them with apartment products. Are you concerned with saturating, or saturation of that market here in Simsbury?
I'll, I'll say, not, not really, because I don't see that many units that are needed being, being built anytime soon. I mean, I think, you know, as the...
Is there a race to get them done? Yeah, I don't see Dorset Crossing, you know, blazing ahead quickly?
I, I can't answer for that. But, all I can say is, you know, I'll kind of reiterate some of the points I made earlier, that, that we're picking product to complement the market. We know what the absorption is, we know what the renters are looking for. And so, these slot in at different points than Mil Commons does. So, we see more demand for this than what we've already got in town, which is a good thing. So I think these will be absorbed quickly. Rooftops drives so much, I mean, through the whole charrette and the pad presentations, I was listening to the whole idea of, we need more, more people that are going to spend dollars in Town Center, and at the car dealership, and, and all that other stuff, and, I'm kind of leading into my economics argument. But, when the charrette was going on, I mean, there was this discussion about eight, nine hundred units of multifamily housing, being what's kind of needed to energize and, and bring population back. Right now, if you look at the statistics, Simsbury is one of the only towns around here that's showing a, a population decline. Other towns, Avon, Farmington are, you know, they are slowing, I mean, they were really climbing in the seventies and eighties, and then to some extent in the nineties. But e- even there, you've got maybe one to two percent population growth, whereas Simsbury's projecting minus growth, so negative growth. And that's reflected in the school enrollment. So again, the idea, bring some rooftops in, you know, right now, so many people would, would love to live in Simsbury, it's a great town, and they probably work in the area, but right now, they're, they're coming from out of town. We've got renters right now at Mil Commons that work at ESPN. I mean, how many towns away is that? But it's, they, they, they want the quality of lifestyle here in Simsbury, and the quality product that we're producing for them. So, we see this as a real plus as an economic engine, and I don't think that even with, with this, and Dorset, and Town Center, and some other things that are in, kind of in the discussion phase, I don't think there's gonna be a, a problem with, with that, so. The economic report, kind of the drumroll, and this is the, the end of my presentation. But there's, you know, there's a lot of calculations in here, and what we try to do is look at the, the basics. So, we've got an upfront building permit fees, sewer connection charges, two point three million dollars. We've got additional property taxes on all the products that we talked about this evening, approximately two point one million a year, with a baseline year of, say, now, because this is where the, the mill rate is right now. As we discussed, it's gonna phase in over a two, two to three-year period, so it'll build up towards that two point one, but at that point, the mill rate might be a little higher, so you might experience a little higher. So, next thing I have...
Excuse me, this is for parcels three, four, five, and six?
Correct.
Not just what you're showing there?
No. But, but what I'm showing here is itemized in here. So you'll see, I think it's about one point two-five million, one point two-five million is the sewer connection charges, and then, one point two-five-two million is just parcel five and six, the one that's up here now. So that's kind of, if you wanna kind of look at the balance point, you know, thirty students, one point two-five million a year in property taxes. I sat on...
It's about a five hundred thousand dollar difference? Is that about right?
Students, what, twelve grand a year?
Well, having sat on, on Farmington Board of Ed for many years, the incremental cost is not the straight line thirteen thousand a student. So when you don't have capacity to handle additional students, it can be very expensive. That student that makes you, you know, put on an addition, it, it's hard to even calculate that. But when you have capacity in a district, and you add a few students in this school, and a few in the middle school, and a few in the high school over a three-year period, there may not be much of any additional cost. So, that's a hard thing to calculate. So I didn't even attempt, because I know the incremental student charge is not a straight line, because you have schools with principals, and all the fixed costs that go with having a district. And if you add one student on, well, you've got some more books, you've got, you know, a few things there. So it's just not a straight line. But again, the, you know, what I could give you is I could calculate for you the revenue side, and that's what we've done here. Then the economic activity, we talked a little bit about that, rooftops and people shop, and they, they do all kinds of things with their earnings. That looks to be somewhere in the seventeen million dollar a year range. So if you have two hundred and fifty-two households, based on an average household spending right now, factual numbers, I adjusted it down for the income level that we projected would be living here, so it's about half of what the, the average is. The average here is a hundred and forty thousand dollars within ten miles of this property. So I used a, a figure around half that, as, as typical that might be in here. So you have two wage earners living in here, it's gonna be a little higher, one or two wage earners here will be a little lower, I took what I thought was a reasonable average. But seventeen million dollars in economic activity per year, at restaurants, retail, travel, all, all the things that are listed there, vehicles, is, is pretty nice. And then the last thing I, I, I kind of wanna talk about is the construction jobs and the materials and labor. It's about an eighty million dollar project, all told, between the four properties. So again, that's a shorter term, but those are, you know, good, good jobs, and those construction workers, while they're here, are gonna be using the restaurants and other services later in town. So we, we look at this as a, a real nice economic engine, without really any downside. I mean, we've got, well, already, this is already approved by STC for about six hundred, or, almost six hundred thousand square feet of something. But by changing uses, evolving and adapting them, transitioning from what's already happened up here, we think it complements pretty nicely. So, that's, that's all, I don't think there's anything else to cover. But we're all available for questions, I think Andy wants to kind of wrap up.
In your portfolio, you say you've been in business now for twenty-five years?
Twenty years, personally.
Twenty years. Can you give me the name of some of your other projects similar to this, that are have a, you know, are ten years out, or ten years in already?
Sure.
You have rental units that are ten, fifteen years old, at this point?
No.
Do you make any residential apartment units ten, fifteen years ago, or are you strictly residential housing?
For sale.
All for sale. When was your first apartment or condominium-type complex?
Well, that would go back twenty years. Forty-six units of condominium in Farmington called Cornerstone on Route Six, sixty-eight units of housing next to it, that was under a, kind of a planned community concept.
Yep.
Center Brook is adjacent to that, the landowner wanted to sell to us, so we kept going. Then we have Garden Gate, which was about fifty-one homes, Rapid Walk, which is on the Farmington-New Britain line.
I'm looking for something in this...
Hundred fifty-eight townhomes.
This, this variety, so I get a feel for, you know, long-term...
I mean, if you wanna see a, a mature multifamily product that's similar to this type, go to see Rapid Walk. It's on the Farmington-New Britain line on Batsman Park Road. Hundred and fifty-eight townhome units, clubhouse, very similar to the one that we envisioned here, similar architecture.
Is that over close to the old Camp Current area?
No, the other, others, yeah, Batterston Park heading towards Stanley Street.
Okay.
Around the other side of the lake.
Yep.
But it's, it's a beautiful community, it's in the neighborhood I grew up in, and it's, it's aged very well, and it really shows the quality that, that we put into it.
Do you still have input over there?
Not really, other than, you know what, they'll call us, they'll call us from time to time and ask us for help, which we're happy to do, the association does. But, you know, we, we built that, we started eight, nine, nine years ago maybe, over there, and it's, it's all complete, and it's all...
Started as resident, I mean, rentals?
We had quite a few rentals in there.
And it's now rentals?
Now, no, we just sold, we just sold the last unit recently.
Two condos?
Chris passed around, I don't know if you, you received it, or you noticed it, but there was an article in Connecticut Builder that talks an awful lot about us, our energy-efficient construction, and the Mil Commons project. That, you know, we're very proud of the awards that were just given in November for it, we swept the, the category, and at the end of the evening of the home builders, they, they announced kind of the drumroll, and then the community of the year. So they look at every, everything that was done in Connecticut, and pick one that they think really, you know, embodies the excellence, and that was Mil Commons here in Simsbury. So, if you have any questions for me, I'll be right over here.
Yeah, we've always had a problem since we were getting the kids who graduated from UConn to come here, rather than Manchester, as their first one. Do you think that this is gonna fill some of that need?
Well, this is exactly why, you know, when, when Hiram talked to us about workforce housing, I, I mean, that's, I, I formed one of the first housing partnerships in, in central Connecticut back in the eighties. And so I, I understand the affordable housing, Chris and I have built quite a bit of it. This isn't quote-unquote affordable housing, it's market-driven, but we've reduced the, the price. So, these will be, you know, median, I think right now, if you look at median income and the rents that could be charged to be considered moderate, it's like seventeen hundred a month. These are gonna be about five hundred dollars below that. So, I, to, to your... So I, to your point, Mr. Chairman, these are designed to hopefully do that, to bring some people back to Simsbury that want to be here. We've been to focus groups and meetings here in town and we've heard the same thing, you know. Can't somebody bring us some housing that's smaller and less expensive that we can bring people back? So between the townhomes ranging from 1,400 square feet with a one-car garage and the workforce studios at 638 square feet, that's the goal.
One other question. In the email we, the package we got, did I read that you're connecting this to West Street as a way to- Is there a geographical way?
No.
Did it say that, or I misread it?
No, there's no physical connection. Other than, I mean, somewhere in there, I may have floated something out about the, kind of the continuation of what we started at Mill Commons as being a certain price point in the market, and then this is going to kind of build from there. But no, there's no, there's Dino Nobel land in between, so there's no, there's no way to have physical connection.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andy Mufada. I work with Gus in Second Vic for Realty. And I'll try to make this pretty quick, because we've been at this for a while now. Basically, I want to cover two of the projects that Gus mentioned earlier. The assisted living project is about 200,000 square feet. And that's actually the site where the town put all the trees. Remember when we had that storm a couple of years ago? So the site has already been cleared. The people are very excited about the site because it's pretty much ready to go. They've actually signed a contract and we're expecting they'll be in here sometime this summer going in under the I-2 zone. What they're talking about, one to four stories. The current plan is 120 independent units, thirty-three assisted living and thirty-three memory care, all within one building that'll range anywhere from one story to four stories in height. So we're looking at that as a pretty exciting project, and that will also sit a little bit off the road. This project here, Gus referred to, is on Site Three. We've received permission to excavate a lot of material off of that site, because right now, you really can't develop it. It's got way too much material, sand, a little bit of gravel in there. That operation will start this spring. It's probably going to go on for about two years. We've submitted plans in your package for a couple of different alternatives, but this is the one that we most favor right now. We can't say with absolute certainty that's what's going to be built there, but the plan is to do something that will be retail, commercial, or office building related. We feel that's a real plus. We have had an inquiry about a restaurant there. We think it'd be an ideal location for the post office if they decide they want to move their big facility there. They can move a little post office there if they want to, but we don't know if that'll happen. Also, office space. We can build up to about 90,000 square feet. We're showing right now about 75,000 square feet. So there is an ability to put office in, but as has been mentioned several times, we've been at this for thirty years and there's just not an office market here right now. And from what we've heard from all the charette and the different kind of workforce housing overlay zone in the village, or we talk Village Center charette that they had, is that people feel right now that Simsbury needs more reasonably priced housing. The reason we chose Landworks, they're an award-winning developer. As you can see, they've already won awards for the project they've done on the north side off of West Street. They study the market intensely. They know what, how their product will fit within niches, so that they're not always replicating the same, they cover stuff over and over again. They're constantly tailoring their product to what will work in the market. And we've been excited, and that's why we've extended our relationship with them and decided to do this other transaction. I can tell you with certainty, when we talk about the incremental cost to kids in school, I happen to be on the Board of Trustees of Goodwin College, and I can tell you that if you have a classroom with twenty college students in it and you decide to add one or two more college students, it turns out to be incredibly profitable, because you've already got the building, you've already got the teachers, you've already got everything set up. So in the case of Simsbury with the school system, if they're just adding a few incremental students, that's a whole lot different than if we were growing dramatically and having to add another whole school. So the cost is not, you know, the way you would normally say, okay, 13,000 or 15,000 students. It's a very incremental charge if you're going to be adding students over some of these schools. That being said, we've heard it third party, but I'm just going to relate the story real quickly. And that is that the gentleman that owns the Sunoco Station on West Street has a little convenience store there. And we've heard that ever since the apartments opened and people started having occupancy, his business has dramatically increased. That's an example of as you bring more rooftops in, the business tends in the area to expand. And if you had people spending $17 million a year here, you would have more restaurants, you would have more activities, you would have more things, economic development to take place. So with that being said, I think we're going to wrap it up, because we have been at this quite a long time. But I'd be more happy to answer questions of Gus or Ron or Chris, if you have any.
That commercial building there?
Right here.
My map shows that that's wetlands. You already have-
The wetlands are over here, okay? And there's about 9.8 acres, I believe, that are dry. And it's like a 26-acre site. So there is a substantial wetland right here. The fact we can show that.
All the blue is wetlands.
Right.
And then this is the parcel we're going to develop.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, here's Route Ten. So yeah, there is a lot of wetlands. It's just sitting there. And there's a little strip of wetlands here. We should be able to develop around it and keep the setbacks.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was confused about placement of the-
And we already got the permits through Wettin and everything to go ahead and do the excavations there. If you want a little food for thought, something we're kind of playing with, the idea right now, is you're allowed to substitute wetlands. And we have wetlands on Bushy Hill. And we thought, wow, wouldn't it be interesting to take some of this material here, possibly move it into wetland, retransport the existing wetland over to Bushy Hill, and that would give you more dramatic space on Route Ten? Just food for thought. I thought I'd mention it. We might be in here in a couple of years and talking about that.
I just have a heart attack.
Was there another question? A couple of weeks ago, there was an application for a re-subdivision of lots.
Three and four.
Three and four, that works. Is that all processed?
Yes.
Signed the papers for drawings?
No.
The map is all done?
Yeah, there, Switzke has the my L R.
He's doing a final review of it.
It only works tomorrow.
Yeah.
That enabled us the ability to split the sites.
Yeah, right along that wetland.
Right.
Water course.
Right here.
Did the zoning commission have any comments about the non-contiguous nature of this PAD?
We're going to be meeting with them on the seventeenth, I believe, is the next meeting with zoning, and that question may come up. One of the things that we felt very strongly about is the fact that when you look at the intent of the PAD zone, it's supposed to be mixed use. And when you look at the fact we've got the office buildings, the hotel, we've got a medical building, this is actually a commercial space with the assisted living. Ron's project is divided into components, and the apartments are actually considered commercial as well from a town perspective. So you have homeownership, you have commercial space. And then, of course, this, in an I-2, ultimately, like we're saying, this will probably be the retail or office space going forward. So we said, with a little bit of vision, you can see how the PAD thing would, I think it's supposed to work.
Assisted living?
That would be considered-
That's okay on I-2 as it is.
They need a special exception to-
Why don't you roll it into the PAD and just have one contiguous parcel?
They had looked at that and thought that it would be to their advantage to stay in the I-2 for the time being.
With a special exception?
Yeah.
Do you know what that is?
Well, it's to go, to be able to build an assisted living facility within an I-2, you need a special exception.
What do you mean, why though? Could have rolled it into the PAD and had it be done with-
Yeah, we've had a new number of discussions with them. And for whatever reason, unbeknownst to me, and I think, we don't know.
Because if it was contiguous, it would really fit the PAD or the guidelines of the P O C D, you know, with the affordable housing and the integration of commercial and residential. Right now, it's kind of broken up. I look at that southwest parcel and, you know, it's just residential.
Yeah.
And then I look at the northwest or northeast and it's commercial. So each taken by themselves, wouldn't really need a PAD, in my opinion.
To, just to add a little bit, we went through a long process with the WPCA a couple of years ago and discovered through that process that rental apartments are not considered residential from a house standpoint. It's a commercial operation. It's like a hotel. There's one owner, you're collecting rent, you're paying expenses, so it's a commercial operation. Also, on the grant list, if you look at the grant list, there's residential, which is homeownership. And then there's apartment, this is a separate kind of a commercial, you know. It's residential, commercial, industrial, apartment. So, you know, again, we're interpreting, because the language of the zone says, you know, two or more uses, like residential, commercial, and everything else. So I kind of look at R2 and I agree with you. I mean, it would be more convenient if it was all rolled together and maybe even encompassed the two existing office buildings to give them added flexibility if they wanted to expand in the future. But I look at this and I see R5, Six as a standalone that conforms and Andy and Gus's parcel three with multiple uses in there as a standalone. But I do, I do think moving forward, you know, Hiram's going to have to make sure that there's more than one use over there, so that we're all in compliance. And again, that's, the whole idea is that gives the flexibility. Andy can go out and market and bring in two or three different types of complementary uses and get that part of it kicked off. But from our perspective, I look at this and I believe we're in conformance. We did, you know, review this with the zoning commission. I believe there were discussions at the following meeting to make sure we were in compliance. We didn't want to apply this way if there was a problem right up front. And it's our understanding that there's not a problem. One other quick thing is just, we will come back to the planning commission in the future with a lot line designation. It is five and six, parcels five and six, and it's shown on the survey plans and the site rendering. You're going to see, there's a line. It's taxed as two separate parcels. I don't want to guarantee you that it's already a subdivision, but we'll be coming to you at some point to say, we'd like to move this five, six line from here to here.
Gus, what happened when this was originally done? This is the same story we heard with the other two?
Yes, same story. Because here's what happens. When you, when we developed originally the park, you know, we had, there were several parcels. And, you know, so you had all these different parcels that were kind of put together. Generally speaking, there were a couple of big parcels. And then all of a sudden, when you put powder forest drive through it, you know, this street, all of a sudden, you got, you got lots here and there. And because putting the street into that subdivided the parcel? Well, maybe, maybe not, because you didn't technically get, you know, you put the street in and you have parcels here and here, and are they technically a subdivided site? Well, we had an attorney look at it and he was like, eh, maybe not, because you didn't technically go in for a subdivision. So you end up having parcels by default. So technically, you need to go back in and just, and get it confirmed, because ultimately, you have to get title insurance. And that's really the guiding principle, and as long as you can convince them, you're all set. So sometimes, these are a little more of a formality, you know.
We figured the easiest thing is to come back to you. Right now, we're still in the master development plan zone change. Is the zone appropriate? Is the concept okay? Next step will be site plan. So during or before that site plan process, we'll come back to the planning commission to request kind of a reinforcement that there is a line between five and six, but we want to move it, so it separates the townhomes from the commercial apartment next to it. So I just wanted to make you aware that we'll be returning here.
You're going to give us time to read this, is what you're saying?
Yes. There'll be plenty of time. There's a lot of engineering to be done, assuming we move forward, so.
One last thing I wanted to say is that we are seeking your endorsement. So we hope that we gave you a full presentation. You have a good flavor of what we're talking about. We will be in front of zoning, I think, on the seventeenth of March. We'll be at the other commission members, because we have a whole series of these presentations that we're going to go through. But we really appreciate your feedback on this.
Tonight?
Yeah.
If you have any questions or ideas, I mean, we have a history of brawling ideas into our plans, so.
Thank you. Any more questions tonight? Thank you very much. We believe in economic development, the right way. We really appreciate your time and the prodigious amount of information that we have to offer to you guys.
If you'd like us back, we'll be happy to return. Thank you.
Do you have a-
Thank you.
Give that, give that economic sheet you were reading from.
It was seven, something.
Your first action.
That's mine.
That's your problem.
Yeah, this one.
Yeah. I had a cheat sheet heading with the summary.
Do we have a, another chance?
Just volunteer, the question that we think that- They're, they're in town. It sounds like they are done yet unless we have a question.
That's what this is.
And I live for after I get rid of that question. Like the regular schedule on that. Yes, compared to-
I'm just supposed to be-
What will happen?
You want us to go?
Well, I'm like over, I don't know if I can-
Have to digest and all.
Ron, this is our-
So I don't know how we're going to do it with our schedule for the next day.
Do you guys need time to recover from that, or?
Just a deep breath.
I'm a little bit overwhelmed myself, because I'm trying to figure out how many school aged children I'm going to have on four units. It's something like .32 or whatever it is. My name is Bill Farigno. I'm a developer from Avon. I run a company called Sunlight Construction. And I also am here to request a affirmative referral to zoning for parcel at 132 Firetown Road. 1.1 acres, so a little bit easier to conceptualize whatnot. 132 Firetown right now is, you'll notice it is a, it's like a big house, but it's an office building. I don't know the exact history, but I think in 1969, the site was changed from residential to PO. It's kind of interesting, because it's all residential around there. I'm not sure what the dynamics were at that time. My idea is to bring this property back into a fully residential state. And I've been talking to Hiram over the last several months and thinking about the most effective way of doing it and kind of bringing, kind of assimilating it back into the neighborhood. Our idea is because the building that's there is structurally very sound, good bones, and it's in pretty good shape, except for it probably needs a little rehab on roofing and siding. Our idea in working with our architect was to take the existing building, add some garages on to it, basically effectively turning it into a duplex-style residential structure, and then adding two single-family houses. This is, this is kind of on a peninsula, where you have Plank Hill on one side, White Oak on the other side. These would be single-family detached homes here. So the total proposal of four units, one of them being a duplex-style unit, has a pretty big structure. It's a 4,200-square-foot structure. It's a raised ranch style, where there would be living space on the main floor and also some on the bottom floor.
Could you, is this someone that's Kitty Corner from the barber shop?
It is. Exactly right, yeah.
You know, with the rock lawn? Used to have a stone lawn, just rocks, it's aggressive.
I can't answer that question. Was it, was it white stone there, maybe?
Yes.
Some years ago, but not now.
White stone.
No, that was, that was some years ago. Yeah. And I don't know the entirety. Probably know that, who knows, that many years ago, I think, Burris and Shaw had their offices there. You know, of late, it has been kind of really underutilized for any economic use. But we thought, we thought it a good idea to use the existing structure, but we wanted to improve it architecturally. With all due respect to whoever built it, or designed it, it's pretty blah, pretty straightforward, very economic to build. I hired Jack Capford, who is a pretty creative man, and asked him to take a look at this from the standpoint of getting it fit out for residential use, where he would add garages on to either end. He would actually change the entrance to this building, so that, you know, this is the, this is the front door now. That just becomes kind of like an architectural feature. We would actually enter each unit from, one from Plank Hill and one from White Oak. And that's where the garages would come in from as well. So by- So, by kind of adding some depth and perception to this building and some other additional features here, we think that it's, here's the side view here from, this would be looking, I think this is from the White Oak side.
Plank Hill.
Yeah, maybe it's Plank Hill. Totally changed the character of what's there now. You've got a huge parking lot on the back end of the property, which would go away, so it actually, I hadn't thought about this till the other day, I was telling Hiram, that actually, this will be a net reduction of actual hard surface in this site. And so the other thing that's going on in this property now is that you've got quite a bit of kind of cut through going through this parking lot, of course, that will go away. So this site will go back into hopefully just a, fit right into the existing neighborhood that it is now. What we'd like to do is propose about, I think this is a 25-foot proposed conservation easement. Here's a nice line of trees there now. No reason for us to take it down, I think we can protect it with a conservation easement. My plan would be to do relatively modest homes and get keeping and scale with the existing neighborhood. It's somewhat of an eclectic mix there. But my proposal would be, and these are some houses that we built in other parts of the area, mostly in Avon, could be anywhere from kind of a Cape style house to two-story house, probably in a range of 2,000 to 2,500 square feet is what I think probably would market well there. I think you want to keep this in scale with the existing community, and, you know, it's not an area where you're gonna build mansions, and we don't want to do that. We want to kind of keep it in the flavor of what's there now. We're gonna bring a, right now, the existing building's on a septic system, we've got a sewer right out front, so we're gonna extend the sewer line up Plank Hill and into the property. We've talked to engineering department about that, it works out very nicely. In terms of what I would call landscaping, each house, of course, will have its own landscape elements, typical to a single-family structure and whatnot. The landscaping that's around, there's some existing vegetation out front now on Firetown Road, and I'm pretty sure most of that can stay. Probably needs to be trimmed back a little bit. But, I mean, we don't have what I would call a sophisticated plan of landscaping. Each unit will kind of get its own landscaping. Most of the service when we get down here will just be grass. Each driveway, of course, will be a paved driveway. And I didn't bring my statistics on traffic with me, I didn't bring all my big shot land planners with me.
Do you want to get a responsive paper?
I didn't, I don't have, I don't have any, I can make copies if you like, I'll come back with copies or whatever. But relatively simple, but I think our idea was to kind of make a, kind of a transition back to what I think should be the use for this area anyway, and I don't know how it got to be professional office, but.
A simpler time.
A simpler time, exactly, so.
Barber shop?
Yeah, well, barber shop's still there, sitting on, I think, like about a tenth of an acre, I remember something like that?
Yes, no.
I don't know how that happened either, but, so, be happy to answer any questions.
The two houses. It seems that you're going back-to-back backyards, or be looking right at each other?
Yeah, I think in practice, and Hiram and I talked about this, again, this was the original schematic, I think it probably is gonna make more sense to offset this one a little bit this way and this one that way. The reason being, existing homeowner on Plank Hill is close to this property line, so I think from the standpoint of keeping, giving them privacy and also giving these two units more privacy, I think it probably makes more sense to offset.
Put them on an oblique, if you wanna know?
Well, what do you mean by oblique?
Kind of a V pattern like this, to where they both have backyards, but they're not looking at each other's backyard.
Okay.
Directly in each other's, and so you accommodate the surrounding land.
Okay. So, I'm not against that idea, but my idea would be more to keep them both parallel to the road, just to kind of keep them, where their front doors look in the correct way, but offsetting them. And by doing that, it effectively does, I think, what you want it to do.
Have you talked to the neighbors at all?
Not per se, no, not per se.
I will tell you that the neighbors were all notified, and we only had one person come in or call that I'm aware of, and I explained to that person what was being proposed, and they said they would mind.
I think one of the original ideas was to do affordable housing there at some point. Is that correct?
That was the workforce.
Workforce, yeah.
Yeah, I suggested to the applicant that I thought it would be a great opportunity to do two more workforce units. When Bill presented that to the zoning commission, they thought that that was just a little too tight for that corner, that two more units would have been, this is very close to the existing zone, very close. So, the way it's laid out and the fact is that the existing structure being split into two, it's kind of a unique use of the existing structure without tearing it down, thought that was a positive. And so what the zoning commission didn't decide on yet, of course, but they suggested that this would be a preferable layout to this, and then the 6.
Is it gonna be zoned, what, R15?
It'll be PAD.
Then why would it be PAD?
First of all, you can't do a duplex in an R15 zone, that's number one. And you just get the flexibility of the PAD zones, that's what it is, too.
Well, yeah, we hear a lot about flexibility, you know, and the flexibility was not just to create residential, you know, homes on smaller pieces of land, it was to integrate the different uses. And as I understand it here, these will be, the duplex be owner?
Be rental units.
Rental units?
Yeah.
So those are the commercial?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm half sold on that one, Hiram.
Yeah. I mean, understood, reading through your PAD zone, which is an exhaustive zone, it has a lot of work went into it, pretty tough to implement all of its features into a 1.1 acre site.
Is this in an enumerated PAD zone?
It's in a PO zone.
In a PO zone.
Professional.
Which qualifies for the PAD.
Okay. How many square feet is this, do we know?
4,200. 4,200, on two levels.
Now, this parcel right now, I think, I'm not sure who the tenants are right now of that building.
The church?
These are the, like, the Catholics.
Is that Catholic credit unit?
Not anymore.
Oh, they're not there, okay. Sorry, the owner, Mr. Faye's here, but I don't, is there anybody occupied?
There's just one tenant without a lease, so we're prepared for a sale.
Hiram, what's, is it, what, 15,000 for an R15? And what are each one of these house lots?
13, just over 13,000.
And you didn't go special exception, why? Can't fit?
You can't do it down that door.
Yeah, there was a desire to use the existing building, you know, as they say, I'm not a big fan of knocking things down, unless they should be knocked down, but this one is, you know, pretty well-built. And it seemed like it was fairly easy to keep it in character with a residential theme, you know, by taking this and putting the garages on and setting it back, giving it some more definition, it seemed like it would assimilate it pretty good to the neighborhood.
The economics don't work just to put one house?
I'm not understanding your question. You mean to knock the building down?
No. Of the two houses.
Oh, it would not work, no.
The economics.
Yeah, it would not work, no. And just to reiterate a little bit of what Hiram said, we did actually prepare a concept plan for six residential units detached, in that case, I think we had, I think we were taking this down, were these, oh no, we were keeping this here and we're putting four units here. It was not well-received by zoning, they really felt that it was a little bit too intense use for that neighborhood.
So, the two new houses will be 2,000 square feet?
Well, in that range, again.
Make it a little bigger than the rest of the houses along that street, or?
No, it's hard to say, it was pretty eclectic mix going out down there. You'd see some at 1600, you'll see others at 2,800. So, I mean, I think my idea goes less to square footage and more to kind of what I would say the feel of the, you know, the design of those units, being a little bit understated, you know, we're not gonna be putting any like super formal type colonials or two-story fours and whatnot, I think you want something that kind of blends in with that, with that neighborhood.
So the duplexes rental and the others for sale?
That's right.
Are there comments or questions?
I think overall, putting residential back on that property is a good use of the property, because it just doesn't seem to fit being that old building anyway.
And if it looks like the rendering that you showed us, it's been improvement.
Right.
Well, that's what we were trying to do, is to improve the curb appeal against Firetown and the whole area there.
So how big are the duplexes?
Well, we have the opportunity to do as much as 2,100 square feet per unit, splitting 4,200 in half, and that's the way it would set up.
So would you go to a townhouse versus?
Well, you know, my feeling is this, that's a big unit, and economically, I mean, you just heard the whole discussion about the economics and who's renting and whatnot, my feeling is that we would develop the entire, again, raise rant, so the entire first floor would be developed, you know, one unit on one side, one on the other side, and then I probably would leave portions of the lower level just as storage space, because the reality is that, you know, you're not gonna get 2,500 bucks a month rent here, okay, which is what 2,100 square feet would translate to. And I think we would want to do something a little bit more economic, a little more sensitive to a, a little bit more affordable. So you could have, I mean, we'll have mechanicals downstairs, you know, you could have like a playroom or something down there, but I think most of the developed space will be on the primary level. There'll probably be two or three bedrooms.
And we have no objection from the neighbors?
Well, Hiram hasn't, and I certainly haven't, you know, we noticed this and.
I mean, it's great, I mean, I concur with the fact that we would love to turn it back to a residential center, it's just that we have a problem with that, the dual houses there, back-to-back, it's just trying to squeeze it right in.
Okay, well, it's something that we can work on with our.
If we could do some configuration changes?
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
I mean, I don't mean to get into the design.
No, no, I understand, understand.
It's not my purview here, but.
I just, I mean, I was just a little bit, I wasn't sure what you were getting at in terms of, you know, the positioning of the house, because I don't think any of us really want to create something where a house is sideways or 45 degrees to the road.
What's considered the back of the house?
This would be the back, okay?
So the backs are staring at one of them?
Well, okay, but again, we would not differ in this way.
No, no, I understand, I'm just, I wasn't sure if the eastern side of the house was considered the backside of the house, depending on where the garage was, if that was gonna be the developed side.
Right, okay.
Somewhat of a patio or walkway or sliding doors that are going to come out into the property.
So the way Jack drew this plan with L-shaped, okay, he probably, he's probably putting this as the back of the houses, okay? But in actuality, you know, we probably will do something with, if it's a straight across house, it'll be shorter than this and allow us to offset these. So that we, say, you're in your family room, you won't be looking in somebody else's family room, you will be looking at a different view there.
There's a different rendering that shows the house is offset.
How many feet is it from back of the house to back of the house? 16 right here.
Well, okay, if we go with this plan, it's gonna be less than what we will actually have. We'll probably have about 30 feet between backs of houses. See, the other thing that Jack did here is he gave you an L-shaped house, which forces those houses together in the back like that. Whereas if we do something more like, any of these houses don't have that feature, so instead of a house being 50 or 55 feet deep, it's only 35 or 38 feet deep. Now you pick up all that extra space in between there.
One of the things about this design too, and it's actually funny, somebody called today, and we're talking about some of the houses that have been built, or what are called snout houses, that is, that when you drive by them, what you see is the garage.
Yeah.
And as Bill said, those other houses have the garages much closer to the road, where in a design like this, and not speaking up for the backyard here, but in a design like this, it's actually the house that you see first, the garage is recessed back, and so it gives less of an impression of a garage right in your face, so that's one of the reasons, I think, why they took a look at this design. But the most recent design that we do have, it shows the house is offset, which I think has a lot of merit.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Because there probably be decks on the back, maybe?
Dexter patios, yeah. And there's probably gonna be the need to do a little screening here, probably do a little fencing between.
Configuration is slightly different in this.
Yeah. Plan, you're looking at, there's a slightly different sort of version.
Design. Make it solvable, you're gonna have to do that. Now, we don't have to comply with setbacks as far as the backyards are concerned, because this is a PAD.
That's correct.
So it's a cluster housing type format.
It's all common ground, actually, so it's, you don't have those setbacks, you will have the setbacks on the perimeter.
Yeah.
But not against each other. But, I mean, to your point, we have to arrange these houses so the market will buy them.
Okay.
So nobody's gonna buy a house that's, you know, 15 feet apart, like that. So we recognize it.
Man, I have to spend my collection.
And I think we are, are we on, we're on for next Monday, are we, at the zoning commission?
Yes.
Is that right? It sticks up, yeah.
So you're on for the third, not for 17?
Yes.
Are we looking for a, some type of recommendation on this tonight?
That would be ideal. I'd make a motion for a positive referral to the zoning commission for application 14-06 for 132 Firetown Road, proposed by MCA, I guess the owner is MCA Enterprises LLC. Based on the fact of the compliance with the PAD. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Would that bother? Kevin? Discussion? Do we want to make any comment about our, about the juxtaposition, or just leave that in front?
Well, I think that's really not a, because they're gonna have to sell.
The market.
The market will take care of itself as far as that's concerned.
I think.
All things concerned, I mean, I'm concerned by it, because, you know, I just want it to look right, it's part of my neighborhood, and so I know the property well.
Understood, yeah.
And.
Well, my brother-in-law lives down in Oakwood, he told me, he's gotta do a good job.
Well, I've been getting my hair cut across the street since 1981 consistently, except for a short, so.
Really?
Have a look at the problems. All right, we have a motion seconded.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
I think so.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, we're back to 3A, Styles of Ongoing projects, Hiram.
The marketing study phase two is listed there, really sort of been subsumed in lots of discussions with the Economic Development Commission about the upcoming budget and what we can accomplish with regard to the budgetary figures. So I really don't have anything new and exciting to tell you, other than the fact that I certainly hope that a few of you would be able to make it to the budget hearing that's upcoming to try to suggest to the board of selectmen that some funding, at least some funding, be set aside for implementing the market study going forward. We had originally done that in two phases, as you may recall, phase one we completed last fall, and that's up on the website for folks to take a look at. Phase two had a lot more detailed information, specific projects, outreach to specific firms, trying to attract those firms to town. There was one segment of it where we talked about creating a video that we could send to people, a specific video with regard to economic development activities in town, so if they were interested in town, we could send that out to them as well. There were a number of other specific things that we wanted to do for implementation, so we're hoping that the board of selectmen will be foresightful and fund that. So that's basically all I really can say about that at this point, I don't have anything new to say, other than if you haven't had a chance to take a look at it, take a look at it, if you have any comments on either phase one, where we ought to go for phase two, take a look. If you have any comments on either phase one or where we ought to go for phase two, take a look at that and give us, give us your comments as soon as possible. That's really all I have on that one.
The Hartford, um, the meeting on the Hartford the other night, I couldn't attend it, I'm going to the one tomorrow morning, but how did it go?
I think the meeting Tuesday night when Gateway Planning came was, was okay. My sort of disappointment had to do with the fact that not many people came. Very grateful that SCTV came and did film it, and I hope that that'll be up on their, their site soon for folks to watch. Um, I think we had about eighteen people there. I thought that perhaps more would, it was a poor weather night, there's no question about that. So there was a question all day, and I really relied on the weather, people saying by mid-afternoon it was going to stop. And it was, they were pretty accurate, but it still was a miserable night to come out, there's no question about that. The draft code that was presented at that meeting is up on, on the website, folks take a look at. It is sixty-one pages, it's thrilling, a reading, so, you know, if you have trouble sleeping, you might want to, you know, try that.
Yeah, hit the wrong button.
But there are at the end of that, a couple of documents, which I'll talk about a little bit tomorrow morning. And that one is the, the process diagram and how that works. There are four different types of applications that could come in under that. And type one application is real simple, it's just an administrative application, like a sign or a minor reuse of the building without, no changes. Types two and three are the, sort of the meat of the whole process. And those types of applications would, would come to, possibly come to this commission, depending upon the type, but it's a subdivision or whatever. Would go to the zoning commission, go to design review before they're decided, and they would go through the normal review process. A type four application, which is if somebody comes in and says, I've got a great idea, but it's not covered by the regulation, it's called alternative compliance. And so it's essentially, uh, I, I wouldn't call it a variance because under Connecticut law, that's a very different animal. But it's alternative compliance is something that we didn't think of, well, we went, we're going through the code creation, uh, but the, the commissions decide, yes, this is a good idea, we should do that. And so it creates essentially an alternative way to comply to the code. So that's a type four application. The, the next thing that's in the, in the, at the very back of, of the code that's online, there are one, two, three, four, uh, different appendices. And one is, uh, one kind of layout, one typical layout, and then there's a framework plan that goes with that. So it shows what the zoning would be for that particular layout. And then there's a second version of that as well. So there are two, two layouts and two framework plans, and so those are the four appendices that are there. We don't know for sure whether there's a specific developer that's interested in, in any one of those yet. I hope we find out very soon because the Realtor for the Hartford is waiting to get this code completed. That'll be, we hope to have it in front of land use commissions in March. And if the Hartford agrees, we'd like to get that adopted as soon as possible so that the CBRE folks can use it in their marketing to people that are interested. They've had calls from people in Massachusetts, Boston, New York, uh, so far, interested in the property. A number of people are talking about it, perhaps they'll be there tomorrow, I'm not sure. But how far they've gone with it and what they would like to do with it, we're just not sure. I'm sure that some component of it will be residential. I'm sure some component of it will be mixed use, but we're adamant about the fact that part of it has to be some sort of mixed use, whether it's retail, commercial, whatever. We're hoping for the best on that, we'll, we'll know shortly. We think we have about, again, about a year and a half, eighteen to twenty-four months before we really, you know, it becomes a dire situation and the building, you know, ultimately could be considered for removal. The Hartford wants to be aware and, and certainly rightly so, that, that they could take the building down if they need to, and they certainly could. They could take it down tomorrow if they wanted to, not with the twelve hundred people that are in right now, obviously. But certainly if they needed to in the next, you know, year or so, they could, they could do that, so that's the reality of it.
Thank you. Communications, administrative business?
I don't have anything, uh, I have, it's interesting, I hadn't really planned to do this. I do have an article, um, that somebody sent me just recently about more housing is needed to spur growth. There's a study about that, so I just want to give that to you, I don't necessarily want to go through it all night, but just give that to you. It's an example of what some towns outside of, of Boston, some smaller towns and some not so small towns did with regard to promoting housing or not promoting housing, and the impact that that had on the overall economic development. It's kind of a fascinating article, so I'll give you that in just a minute or two. The other thing I wanted to do, because I suspect that, as you said, as somebody said earlier, you may have a few more questions that you wanted to ask one of the applicants before you decide on a recommendation for, for referral for the, um, the PAD at Powder Forest. Take a close look, if you would, at the housing section of the Plan of Conservation and Development. Provides a lot of good information in terms of what the housing section does. I suspect most of the discussion, most of the questions will have to do with the housing part of that PAD that we saw tonight as opposed to the other parts that are, that are less clear right now. But as I read through the housing section just recently, again, there are a lot of things that the, the planning commission, this commission did a couple of years ago to talk about, um, different types of housing, providing different mixes of housing, enabling, enabling greater diversity in the housing options. So it's, it's really kind of right on the mark, so some of the questions. Now, if you have other questions in the meantime that you'd like me to get to the developer, I assume that what you'd like to do, and I'm just assuming here that you would probably want to have that particular item on your agenda for the next meeting for the eleventh, March eleventh. We'll still be in time for the, uh, the zoning commission meeting on the seventeenth, so if you want to do that, we can.
My question is, does it, does it have to go out for public notice too?
Yeah, it's a zone change, absolutely.
So, so how long does it have to go out for public?
It's out now.
It's out now?
Yep. Just like the other one was, just like the two of them. Blank, though, was, same thing.
But we don't have to have a public hearing to give a referral to the zone.
No, zoning will, zoning will, zoning will have the.
Right, correct me if I'm wrong, but I guess we have the ability to, according to the pad, it's not zoning, it's planning that has the ability to change for the pad or?
No, the, the PAD is actually the zoning regulation.
The zoning regulation.
But it says it has to be, uh, you know, um, guided by the adopted Plan of Conservation and Development, which is our document.
Right, exactly, that's exactly why I came, I just suggested.
Right.
Take a look at this section, see if you think it fits or, or not, whatever you want, you know.
Is our next meeting the eighteenth?
I'm sorry?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Eleven, yes.
But why don't we, why don't we read the stuff and, uh, at least have, maybe request at least, we don't need fifty people, but if we have, don't you think if we have one person, whether it's Gus or somebody else to come back and represent them, we can ask the questions? And if we have any advance, we give them to Hyrum?
Yeah, please do, if you do, then I can give it to them and they can be ready to answer them.
I thought it was a little interesting that Land Works was speaking for three different property owners.
Well, if you notice, they did actually split it up where, where Gus initially spoke for the two that they still own. Land Works was speaking primarily for their own.
Until it got to the economics, then it was all commingled.
They did. Yes, that's right, absolutely. And, and clearly, I mean, clearly, that's, that's speculative at this point, no question. I mean, there's the economics for their portion, I'm sure they've done that, they probably know what that is. The other portions we haven't seen yet, and we talked with the developer of the assisted living facility one time, so we don't know. We're, we're really, and I, you know, this, this proposal has changed significantly since they first came in. There was no workforce housing as part of the first part. You know, we really kind of suggested to them, this, this needs to be part of the proposal here, this is important for the town. Uh, the second thing is that, that commercial piece on the corner of Powder Forest and Hot Meadow is really important. And I thought, you know, could well be a nice office building, it could well be, you know, a nice restaurant that overlooks that beautiful lawn down onto Hot Meadow. Some of the connections that they talked about with the trail down to, to Hot Meadow and, and across to, to the trail were things that we, that Town Engineer and I also suggested to them would help a great deal if they suggested that. So, so we think that there's been a fair amount of flexibility so far, so we hope that that.
Are the forests on the other office buildings fully occupied, do you know?
I don't know that they're fully occupied, I don't. I know that there have been a number of businesses that have had employees of fifty or sixty people, and they've talked to those people and they said there's not room for that many people in there. So if the spaces that are, are in there, they don't have enough for, for that many anyway, so. There are a couple of firms that are looking to move into town, and I'm suggesting to EB that, look, if there are that many firms, you know, and they're, you know, everybody's very careful about building new things right now, no question. But we'd rather try to hit that sweet spot in the market where we can get a number of firms. This is exactly what the, phase one of the marketing study said. The, the right type of firm, the right size of the firm, you know, we're not looking for firms with hundreds of people in them. We're looking for firms with, you know, ten, twenty, thirty, forty, maybe a hundred people max. So that's the kind of thing we really need to attract, so we're hopeful that, that we can get them to do that.
Eric, what's your feeling? I mean, we only have a few areas of sizable development left in town, and it seems like we're consuming them with residential components. Actually, we're eating up our I two, which I know is, which should be commercialized as compared to industrialized because we're never going to see industry. That's just not going to happen, and I've, you know, realized that in the past, but we're consuming all of our commercial zone into a residential, um, pattern here.
It may seem that way, I think that, um, the reason that I think it seems that way is because you see applications for that, for the PAD. Um, and, and it's being, the PAD is being successful. I did an analysis not long ago, which indicates there is well over fifteen hundred acres of additional industrial, commercial land available. The whole north end is a tremendous amount of open space, it's all zoned the same way. And there's a tremendous amount of land that Griffin Land controls, that Cobre controls. There's, there's an awful lot of land in the north end that's still to be developed the same way. There's a tremendous amount of land in the south end as well. Some of it we saw as part of Cobre's proposal years ago, that's still there.
I mean, none of it's on the corridor, for the most part, it's all up into the residential areas.
No, no, it's all around ten. I mean, I'm talking about fifteen hundred acres that fronts on Route ten. It, there's a tremendous, and I'll, what we'll do sometime in the near future is drag out a map, show you, show you what's still there, what's still available. There's about, you know, eighty-two percent of the town is, is either in holding, you know, either we have open space, we have thirty-two percent of the town's in open space. So we have to, in my opinion, is for years I've said, we need to densify places like Wheatug. We need to densify the town center, the North Village and those areas as well. But there's still an awful lot of land around those that could be developed commercially. The sort of the, the sad part of this tale is with the, the first thing that, that EB said tonight was, they've been trying to do that for thirty years, and it hasn't happened.
Right.
And frankly, it's not going to happen from everything that I've seen in the next ten, fifteen.
We don't have the infrastructure or we never will.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, look at the, you know, that, that's why I asked about the traffic study and see how, you know, what was the outcome there? And the outcome was strictly, we'll do some turning lanes. Well, that's not what companies are looking for, they're looking for, um, drives, unencumbered drives, um, to get to and from the major arteries. And we have a problem right now, even this project that they've presented to us, and they're talking about how it's, it's actually going to be complimentary as far as the traffic is concerned, it's only going to add to the traffic. All, all this residential is still going to go into the Hartford metropolitan area to go to work. And they're not going in the same direction and coming back in the same direction, it isn't an opposite thing as compared to what we were going to have with, um, if that stayed as a commercial zone where we would have people coming into a commercial zone and other people leaving the area as well, they're going like this. Now everybody's going in the same direction, and that Wheatug is a horror show from seven o'clock to nine o'clock.
It's a three-minute horror show.
It's only about twenty minutes, but the other, the other thing is, and this has been very, it's very interesting recently is that a, a lot of the people that are coming in are ending up, you know, going to their large firms, large corporations over in Day Hill. They're not going that way, they're going to go this way. And they, and that's what we're seeing, the traffic reports, the traffic analysis is showing that. The way Day Hill is, is expanding because it's obviously has transit, it has four lanes, a lot of large office buildings, including unfortunately one of the new Hartford buildings, a, a lot of people are going that way. So there, there is a split, they had about a forty-five, fifty-five foot split, um, tonight, and I don't think that's unreasonable. I think unless there's a reason for people to all go one eighty-five, uh, you know, I think we're going to continue to see that split. The other thing that's really, I think prevalent is that we're going to see more and more people working from home continually. You know, even the insurance companies.
Yeah.
People only work, maybe go to those offices two or three days a week. And other than that, they work from home. And I think that's going to be a continuing trend, so when we say we're looking for retail, you know, we need to be cognizant of the fact that unless we have people, there's not going to be any market for people to build retail, that's number one. The second thing is conventional retail that we used to see, like, let's say somebody came in and wanted to build another, you know, Gray Hill Plaza. It, it just, I don't think that's even going to happen here. It might happen somewhere else, maybe it might happen in Manchester, it might happen in Bristol, or the Berlin Turnpike. I don't think that's going to happen here. I think what we're going to see is discreet, well-designed, high-quality development, hopefully densifying our centers, whether it's Wheatug, Town Center, North Village.
So you see this as a plus for the Wheatug section because it's going to add density there?
I do, um, but I, you know, obviously.
And that corner unit that's going to be a commercial parcel down at the entrance. Parcel three, is it?
Yeah.
Parcel three, which is what they're contemplating as a part of the PAD.
I think that's one thing, I think that, and I also keep in the back of my mind too, is what the, what the Wheatug study showed. We did the Wheatug Village District Study, that the whole Mitchell area and that large amount of property across the street there will be the nucleus of a, of a fairly dense, um, you know, commercial center in that particular area as well. So need to look long-term, I think.
Right.
I'm certainly not trying to tell you how to consider this.
No, 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 you know, I mean, that's what we want to do, is kind of build and a density aspect to Wheatug to, to actually turn it into a village as compared to, you know.
Yeah.
There's some car lot there and that's it, and there's one restaurant, and we consider that a, a village area, it's like, oh, we can.
Well, I was kind of stunned during that, we did the whole Wheatug Village District thing, and people said, well, they really enjoyed hanging out at the, at the gas station to get their coffee and donuts in the morning or something, I was kind of really surprised by that. But I guess a lot of the older folks met there and, you know.
I mean, the AC Petersons of our lives are, are gone now, and there's no place to, there's very few places to hang out for breakfast.
It's like the Peaberrys of Wheatug or something, where people can hang out, so.
But so I think the demand, the more bodies, more heads in beds is going to help the downtown too. Cause someone will say, oh yeah, I think I will open my business.
I have another contention there, it's like, they kept, um, referring to the charrette. No, the charrette is for the downtown section, and they want a residential component here in the downtown, not three miles down the road. It's like, why bring that up, I, I don't see it as a, um.
I don't know if they were referring to the downtown charrette, if they were referring to the work that we did on the Wheatug Village District.
One of them mentioned Wheatug.
Yeah, I think, I think that's probably what they're referring to more than the downtown state.
But I kept, they kept referring to it as the charrette, and the only charrette we had was downtown area.
We actually did a charrette on that Route ten study too, the Route ten quarter study as well, so.
And the Hartford?
Yeah.
I have a question. I wonder if there's any interest in setting aside some time just to talk about apartments? Just about, I don't know where it would go, I don't know if it wanted to go anywhere in particular, just to talk about the group. Seeing so many new apartments coming up, is there a tipping point beyond which we should be concerned? Are we away from that? Does it matter?
Well, that's part of the, the other side of the equation of losing the, um, industrial or commercial zones and filling them up with a residential component.
Well, that residential component is different than some orders. I just, I would like us to set aside some time, just to have a frank discussion, I'd like to see where everybody is on this. Just about the numbers we're seeing, what does it mean for the town, what does it mean in turn to the P O C D? Whether we'll resolve anything, I don't know. Maybe we, we find out that we know more than we think or less than we think.
Well, the key ingredient here is that we are supposed to be looking into the future.
Right.
What we are giving up in the future.
That's why I think.
What is the immediate need and what actually works right now, and they've done their studies, and, well, this is hot right now, yeah, right, this is hot right now. And there was also a, a, a fall in the, um, the, uh.
So what, what would you say to an agenda item where we just set aside some time to talk about what you mentioned and other things? I don't know if people have an interest in that, I can't see the harm in it, I'd feel more comfortable if I just learned.
We've got some, a little material to read here which directly or indirectly relates to what you're talking about. I mean, what we got tonight, I've run with the education part and all that, the residential, so maybe at some future meeting, Eric, we could put that in the agenda and discuss just what you want to discuss.
How fast do they want to move along on this?
Wouldn't we want to talk about it before we?
Move on this?
Move on this?
Yeah, I, I, I don't think the answers are.
How soon do they want to move forward on this, or how, what's their referral time? Are they also looking for the seventeenth of?
They're, they're, we're looking for the seventeenth, so your next meeting, the eleventh is when.
So we can't, we can't have that unless we have any, um.
You could put, you could put on, I mean, I have no problem at all with putting on your agenda, just, you know, you need to tell me your questions so that we can have factual stuff to you.
Yeah.
Uh, if we want to get together and just sort of shoot the breeze, that's fine, but I, I think what you're asking for, you want more, you want factual information.
Yeah.
You know, take a look again at that section from our Plan of Conservation and Development. You know, take a look again at that section from our Plan of Conservation and Development, you know, talks about what percentage of our, of our housing.
You know, I don't know if it makes sense, but I personally have gotten a lot of questions about the number of apartment units coming in, so does it make sense, is it part of our responsibility to notify the public that we're having an open discussion on the number of apartment units?
Well, it would be on an agenda.
Our discussions are all on, are all in Town Web, they're all on Town Calendar.
People are, a couple thousand people right now watching on TV and hearing all those discussions.
You think so? See, I, what I'm thinking is, that's right, as much information as you think is apt to come up to bring would be great, otherwise, you're right, we're just wandering around. But I can also see that the discussion will lead to some questions where we need information after that. I'm not relating it necessarily to the application we heard tonight, not necessarily, I just would like to have a better feel for what does it mean. What does it mean to Simsbury if we have 300 apartments or 1,300? How, what does it do for us and against us 10 years from now, 20 years from now? Maybe we don't know, but I think we should talk about it, that's what we do.
I think there's a lot of, there are a lot of people that ask those kinds of questions every day, Alan. Getting as much factual information in terms of, you know, what impact has this had on other towns, what's the, what's the, what's the right ratio for the town, those are all good, good questions, there's no question about that.
I think we should talk about it, I've been asked twice this week about it.
Yeah, but I, what thing is sort of dismaying to me is that a lot of people, you know, have a lot of false information, so I think that's why factual information is very helpful.
That's why we should talk about it.
Yeah, well, again, you know, if there are questions that you want to see addressed that we can get you factual information for, happy to do that. But to, but to say, you know, it's, whether it's the community center or whatever it happens to be, you know, let's just get some factual information out there and then discuss.
I think I'll know what my questions are more when we shoot the breeze for a few minutes.
Well, that will just pose questions, I mean, like we were talking about a few minutes ago, we were talking about the school enrollment. Well, at the end of the 70s, there was a way big drop-off in school enrollment as well, and they were going to close Central School. Within 10 years after that, they were trying to expand Central School, and thank God they didn't close it down. They had betrayalers in, so these ebb and flows come all the time in school populations, only because you have this, these families that move in, they stay until their families are gone and moved out, and then, like us baby boomers, we'll be gone soon too, and new families will be taking our place.
There's that crystal.
And it's a very desirable time to be living in, so to say this 10-year or 20-year period is, the model of what it's going to be, or how it's going to be for an extended period of time, isn't necessarily true, you can see it through a 50-year history as compared to just a 10- or 20-year history.
I think probably that our mission is in the, in redoing the, or looking again at the Plan of Conservation and Development, as we look at those issues, I don't think we have the ability to put a governor on projects before us based on non-facture, things that affect, you know what I mean, I'm saying, we can't say that, it's just like, the Zoning Commission can't say it can't be pink, you know, there's certain statutes that Hiram can keep us on the straight and narrow.
I don't think that's what I'm asking for. I'm just, I would just like, maybe we can dream up some questions now, I'd just like to know, what does it mean to the town in terms of economics, town character, there's probably 20 things you could list, when we keep adding hundreds of apartments at a town at a time? Nothing? Is it all for the good? Are there some problems associated with it? We should know that before we start talking about.
But that's so subjective, because things are changing so quickly, just as we were talking about employment. Employment is nothing like it was 25 years ago. Everybody had hard places, and now we're moving definitely toward a cyber office arrangement, and it makes such a big difference, and, you know, just economics in general, businesses are downsizing or moving out of an expensive state like Connecticut is. The dynamics of Connecticut alone has changed drastically in the last 25 years.
So then if somebody proposed a thousand apartments next week, that, well.
I mean, I don't think anyone would propose a thousand apartments.
Because the market wouldn't accept it.
Right.
And also if it brings in youth, I mean, I was maybe reading between the lines, but it brings in a younger population to generate some of the things maybe we could have in downtown that we don't have now, that have needs.
Well, that comes with a smaller price point, and there's very few of the smaller price points, we're still going high-end here, I mean, this is the high-end town, and he's going to market the high-end.
Because he's not going.
I looked at, I looked at the listing of who's renting apartments.
Those are those workforce units, the higher percentage of them are all going to be in that $2,000 range, or $1,700 to $2,000 range, but once again, we're getting away from, we don't need to be talking about this necessarily, but just apartments in general, and where they're taking us.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
No, and I understand, but I'm, I'm trying to suggest to you that the dynamics are constantly changing, and there's no past history that's going to give us a good, clear idea of the questions that we're bringing up now, because things are changing so quickly on us, I believe.
If we, if we, each of us asked ourselves, would you rather see an apartment building, well, let me back down, there was a town survey done in 2008, and many questions, okay, scientifically done, by the way, not a random survey, and one of the questions was, how do you feel about this type of development, how do you feel about that type of development? And I looked it up today, 62% were opposed or very opposed to apartments, okay? That's not what people wanted to see. Now, that's, that's something I don't want to ignore, I mean, there's other questions in there too, I don't think we should ignore that survey, that's, and I remember Dunney Barney used to say, if we only knew what people thought, well, at that point in time, we have some idea what people thought. So I'm saying that if people are that concerned, that's a big number, by the way, if people are that concerned about that, then at least it's worth a few minutes for us to see, are we concerned about that?
Yeah.
One of the things I noticed in his, like, who rents these apartments, a lot of these people are temporary, not the seniors, the empty nesters, not them, but the guys that are here for a couple of years, the corporate execs, maybe the people that want to be near their children when they get divorced, that kind of thing. I lived in a community in Poughkeepsie, which I never admitted to before, but I, I lived in Poughkeepsie and it was full of IBMers, and IBM there means I've been.
Two years, gone.
That's right, okay, and Poughkeepsie never got anywhere, because nobody had any attachment to the community.
Right.
Now there, it wasn't, and a lot of them were renters, but there, it wasn't because they lived in apartments necessarily, it's because they were temporary, as are many tenants, and, or am I wrong? Okay, I would just like to have a discussion.
I think we've been having a pretty good discussion.
I think we should put it on the agenda for next time, given the time of the.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm asking.
I just want to say, I think, I think people's conception of apartments are, look at our age group here, the brick square building with a flat roof, that's what they see as an apartment. It's not what we're talking about, and any of the projects we've, we've seen come before are, are brick building, you know, square box with, you know, two-bedroom apartments in it. We're seeing better, better, you know, places for people that want to, to maybe still rent and be in a better, better design, better community-oriented. We're not seeing the, what we saw blast up in the 60s and 70s, we, we all grew, grew up near those we saw.
Agreed, agreed.
We're not there.
You're talking about lipstick, kind of.
Not necessarily. But I mean, I, I, I mean, I think, at least from my understanding and talking with several people that have brought it up to me, is how it's changed, it'll change the character of the town. Not necessarily how it actually looks, but how it changes the character to Alan's point, right?
One of the things that we talked about during the downtown charrette is that the average age in this community is much higher than a lot of communities around us, it was over 42, it was 42.9 as a matter of fact.
Yeah.
And the survey that was done was from people that live in town. Now, if, if the only people that you really are worried about planning for are people that live in town, not attracting new people to it, because as, as we get older and older, and we don't have the younger people, then it's going to get harder and harder to, to get the things that you want to get as well, so we need to find that balance, you know?
Agreed.
That's really important, that point as well. So I think you've got to take each one of these things with a, with a grain of salt. I mean, you know, I think Bob's right, I think we're seeing things that are being built that are going to satisfy what people want to see in the market, that these things have pools, they have clubhouses, they've got mail, you know, places to get the mail and stuff, they have their sort of little networking things, and the, and the types of, you know, Pruitt-Igoe developments that years ago, that wasn't the case at all, so it's a very different.
It was a Mindy effect, too, like, my youngest in the hills will live in California, and the house is very expensive there, they're, they're thinking of just getting a nice apartment and using the money to travel and do that kind of stuff. And this town, if you can live decently and do other things, because, as you say, it is changing, both of them, they move a lot, they make good money, and so I think we have to, you know, it's tough to get a handle on what's going to happen with the world in the next 10 years, but, you know, we can, definitely should put on the agenda, have a discussion, but.
Would you be able to send us some guidelines of what you're looking for?
You send, you send me your questions, and I'll try to, you know, whatever they are, you know?
I'll do what I can.
Yeah, just to let you know, too, that on March 20th, the next CROG meeting, I think Bill and Mark were scheduled to see that one, just wanted to remind you.
Yep, it's on my calendar.
All right, okay. SCTV is going to run out of tape, so.
Okay, very quickly, we have to do the approval of the minutes for February 11th. So you'll pull those up, if you can find this pile of papers, we'll have at it.
Whoops. Okay.
Is there something that you're, you're on?
I don't know, printing?
Approval of the minutes of February 11th, 2014, page one, yeah, it's all in front of us. Changes or deletions?
Line 35, is that King Philip Road?
Yeah, so, singular.
Yes, singular.
Yeah. And the next to last line, my, my numbers pages have all question marks, so it's, pardon me for going on position, but anyway, the next to last line, the contractor, did he really agree, or he said he was, I thought at the sidewalk, he said he was considering it, has he firmly decided he's going to put in sprinkler systems?
He's going to put in sprinkler systems in lieu of the face, sorry. Statements is appropriate.
Okay, thanks.
Now, page two.
Do we have the, didn't we have the name of the neighboring resident in the third paragraph? Do we need that? Is it important or not?
Gallagher.
Bill Gallagher?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
I don't know.
With the house with the fine green car.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so.
You want me to fill it?
Mr. Gallagher.
What line?
It's. 56.
Yep. 56?
Yep.
Anything else on page two? Hearing none, page four?
Again, on, what's that one? Suitable, starts with suitable.
165?
165. Did, again, maybe I didn't hear it, he's going to pave the side, when you read this, it may be many of the times, you know, when the development is going on.
They're speeding you up that extra two feet.
Yeah, it's going to pave this two feet as well.
Yeah.
If, if the town engineer, town engineer wants.
Right, during development, if the side is too soft or whatever, you'll make it our service.
Yeah, thank you.